Tonight is Monday, March 13th, and we do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved. Second?
We will now vote to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Dr. Stanley, would you please review tonight's agenda for us?
Absolutely. So really excited about our excellence in action this evening. We'll have discussion about Legislative Action Committee work. We're going to get an update on our preliminary operating capital budget. We will have policy review, quite a few policies coming through. We are going to hear one more time about our K-5 science curriculum. And we have policies that are actually coming through that have been reviewed before. And then we'll give our updates. We are moving into a closed session related to employee negotiations.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Moving on to our excellence in action, and tonight's excellence in action segment will feature Edina High School students and staff who are going to share experiences from their trip to Vietnam, an international travel opportunity that was recently reinstated since the pandemic. We're going to welcome our student presenters, Claire, Shane, and Will Seidelman. And then our staff presenters are Edina High School Social Studies Teacher of the Year, I might add, for the state of Minnesota. Chris Griggs, sorry if I embarrassed you. And then Edina High School Assistant Principal Jen Carter. So welcome.
It was almost unbelievable that as a group, we were there. Throughout the time that we traveled in Vietnam, we saw the north, we saw central Vietnam, and we saw south Vietnam. And again, it was just such an impactful opportunity for each student to be able to experience, this very immersive experience. And so I will, just a couple of things I want to include. The picture here on the left is one of the times where we stopped at the airport before we were flying from Da Nang to Ho Chi Minh City, where students had the opportunity to reflect. They kept a journal throughout the experience. And the other picture is from when we went to a cooking class, and students again had that hands-on experience. I'm going to turn it over to everyone else to speak about what was impactful for them.
At the outset of these types of, the planning for these types of tours, like back in 2019 for this one, I often bring up the phrase "learn by doing." And we had lots of moments like that on this experience. One of the ones up here in the picture that I've highlighted is a moment where we were invited into the home of an Air Force veteran from the North Vietnamese Army. And we went into his home, and we had this really rich discussion about the war, the American war, as they call it there. And so we had just various opportunities and various different subject matters that came up in that conversation related to the war that we just simply couldn't get if we were in a classroom. And then also, just on a more basic level, the fact that we were in the home of a Vietnamese person just gave us this access into daily life there that we just, you know, it's just not something we can get just every day, anytime. So a couple of different ways to access a different style of learning, a different kind of learning that I felt was pretty impactful.
So one of the most impactful things to me is one night in Vietnam. Our tour guide, like, gave us this opportunity to go into this public square and just talk and find conversation with anybody. And so me and a friend, we found these two teenage girls, and we just started a conversation with them, talking to them about their daily life in Vietnam, their school, their travel experience, and just whatever they wanted to talk to us about. And this experience really gave me a new look onto the, like, daily life of a teenager in Vietnam. And it made me reflect on my own life and how, like, privileged I am. And it was just a really good experience. And it also gave me an opportunity to, like, positively represent our Edina community and all American teenagers, to these two girls and also everybody else we met on the trip.
I had two things that were, like, super impactful coming back. One of them being, we were in Hoi An, which was one of the cities we stopped along, and that was like a big opportunity to shop. And with that came bartering, and that was like a big difference, like, that kind of like challenged me between, you know, you literally just tap your card here and you're good to go, but then there you'd have to, like, kind of barter down the price. And I was really nervous about doing that initially, and then it became like a really fun game along the way. So that was like one of the most impactful things. And then the second one was, at the first stop, we went to Hanoi, which is in North Vietnam, and to the Hanoi Hilton, which is where, like, John McCain and a lot of American prisoners of war were. And we were there, and one of the pictures I included was, like, all of them having fun and playing basketball and, like, New Converse. And I remember walking out and talking to Mr. Griggs, and I was like, were they, like, actually, like, prisoners of war? Like, this seemed, like, really fun. And then it kind of was like the realization, oh, this is, like, propaganda. We're in North Vietnam. So that was another, like, aha moment when we were there, where I was like, oh, there's multiple perspectives to a war, not just the American point of view.
So I'll leave you with our final picture that we had after the growth of traveling with this group of 15 amazing Edina Public School students. We thank you for all of your support as the changes, and at one point, it never looked like this would happen. But we thank you for the opportunity to represent our school in Vietnam.
Well, thank you so much for coming and speaking to us, and thank you for representing our community so well in the District of Edina and being good stewards of both our district and, like you said, our country as well over in Vietnam. Really appreciate it. And learning about the opportunities, it's just wonderful. Okay, we are going to move on to our consent, oh, we have no community comments today. So we're going to move on to our consent agenda. And I wanted the board to know that there was a late add to the consent agenda for hires. Jennifer Freelich was added. She's replacing Lisa Hawthorne, who has retired. So that, it is in the packet, but it was added this afternoon, so I just wanted the board members to know that that was added to the consent agenda. Do we have, is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. We're going to move on to our discussion items, and our first discussion item is an LAC Legislative Action Committee mid-session update from Director Green, Chair of the LAC.
Great. Thank you, Chair Allenberg. The Legislative Action Committee just wanted to do a quick mid-session update to the board that was included in the packet tonight with kind of the activities that have gone on since we started meeting this past September. Two things to note, we did have a very successful LAC Legislative Breakfast that took place on January 24th. And we had just about 60 attendees there, and it really built a lot of momentum up to what we took place last week, which was March 8th. We went down and had the Day at the Capitol that the LAC hosted, and it was just fantastic. We had over 20 students join us, and the board was with us, and Dr. Stanley, and we met with legislators. And we had one-on-one time, and we really worked at communicating our priorities to the session. One of the other things that we did do was we did present a letter to our local representatives, and it has since been shipped out to other legislators outside of our district, but in lead positions on the cross, Special Education Cross-Subsidy, really asking for this session to rectify that and really get us moved in the right direction in terms of not just special education, but also ELL. So that was just a quick overview. Two things, or three things that have happened since this document came out. One is, it looks like our LAC will be meeting with Representative Lori Pryor in the next coming days, which is great. She is Chair of the Education Policy Committee for the House, so we will continue to advocate as much as we can. And then two, the high school newspaper Zephyrus came down on the Capitol date and followed us around and reported. They have started putting stuff out on social media. If no one has seen it, they are really pumping things out, and it's getting a lot of traction with photos and quotes and all sorts of things. So I thank Zephyrus for their coverage of that, and look for that on social media. And then number three is, if any community members are listening and want to help get engaged, send us an email at legislativeaction@edinaschools.org. Or you can go on to the School Board part of the website and find Legislative Action Committee information. But please continue advocating along with us. This is a super, super important session for education. So I think that's it, unless board members have any questions.
Other questions from board members? Well, thank you, Director Green, and Director Arum, and Director Shaw for all the work you've done on this. It's been amazing to see all the students down at the Capitol and really excited about potentially what could come out of this session. So, thank you. Our next discussion item is with Business Services Director Mert Woodard, and it's our fiscal year 2024 preliminary operating capital budget.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, members of the board, Dr. Stanley, those in attendance tonight. Many school districts across the state, including Edina, will typically bring the operating capital budget for adoption before the full budget in June. This allows the administration to order some of those items that require long lead times while in advance of July 1st so that we can get them into place and ready for staff and students. Many of the items that are listed as part of the proposal are items that are recurring in nature, although the amounts may differ from year to year. I'd like to call your attention to the item at the very bottom of the list, the $550,000 cost containment recommendation. So that's a budget item that will be budgeted but not used, and all of that money will go towards our cost containment recommendation of $4 million in total. I have no other comments besides that, so if you have any questions, I will field them now. I think we do plan to bring this item to the April regular meeting for a full approval.
Board members? I have a quick question, Mert. Could you please explain the difference between, or could you explain exactly what adjusted pupil units is, so there's not confusion in the community, how that's not actual students in our district?
Absolutely. So adjusted pupil unit is simply one way the state measures attendance and the revenue that's derived. The first step is to measure the average daily membership of a student. Then there's a weighting factor between first, or K through 6th grade students and 7th through 12th grade students. Each K through 6th grade student can derive a maximum of 1 ADM, whereas the 7th through 12th can derive 1.2, which becomes the actual pupil unit. So pupil units will always outweigh average daily membership, which is more of a headcount.
Thank you. Anything? Great. Thank you very much. Our next discussion item is our policy review with our Policy Committee Chair, Director Neville.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. Thank you, Mert, for staying up here just to give a presentation of our seven, some of our 700 series policies. These were discussed at our last Policy Committee meeting with several suggested updates, as noted in the board packet. And I'd like to invite Mert to walk us through what that is. Maybe we'll just take all of these together as a lump and just go through them for, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Neville. Before I begin going through the policies, I'd just like to remind the members of the board that the slate that is before you tonight has been reviewed in detail by both the Finance Committee of the Board on February 6th, as well as the Policy Committee last week, or perhaps the week before, I can't remember now. Policy 701, Establishment and Adoption and Modification of the School District's Budget. The main changes or proposed changes to this policy are Section D, Paragraph 3. The 2021 Special Session required that the County Auditor supply individual homeowners with additional financial information regarding the school district. This is something we already do as part of Paragraph E. I thought it was important to make sure that the current administration and future administration comply with this and make sure that the County Auditor has the information that they need. Otherwise, they'll put all zeros on the tax parcel mailing, which you may have noticed last year. Section 5, Modification of the Budget. Paragraph A has been a proposed modification, rather, to include the revenue budget and not just expenditures. This then makes portions of Paragraph C redundant, so that's been suggested as a deletion. Any questions on 701? Okay. Policy 702, Fund Balances. The main changes here are concerning the minimum fund balance, the committed fund balance, and the assigned fund balance. Section 5, Minimum Fund Balances. The proposal at this time is to offer a ceiling to our minimum fund balance of 10% rather than just a floor of 6%. This provides additional financial security and gives the board a governance tool to have a higher fund balance target rather than just a 6%. Also, it defines the calculation for deriving the percentage. It was not clear before the language was added. Section 7, Committed Fund Balance. Years ago, the district had a policy to have a 2% committed fund balance. That was since revised to 1%. And we're proposing that that be brought back up to 2%, again, enhancing the district's financial security. For context, the committed fund balance of 1% represents about $1 million. So this would bump that figure up to $2 million, which the district can easily do by rearranging the fund balance assignments that currently exist.
And, Mert, if I could ask that we just pause for a moment. We had what I thought was a really helpful explanation at the Policy Committee discussion about the different fund balance definitions, which is included as part of the policy language. But if you wouldn't mind, just for the community and for the rest of the board, providing that general overview, it'd be very helpful.
Absolutely. So the Government Accounting Standards Board offers five different fund balance categories, which all public entities must use. Those are the non-spendable portions of fund balance. So those are items that are paid for in a previous period but will be used in a subsequent period, for example, inventory. If I buy a collection of books on June 29th, they're really going to be used in the subsequent school year, so those become a non-spendable fund balance. There's then the restricted fund balance. Those are residual values which must be restricted for purposes determined by the state of Minnesota. Operating capital would be one of those. Any leftover money in that fund must be used for those purposes in subsequent years. There's the committed fund balance. That's an unassigned fund balance that is committed by a school board action. So the school board could pass a resolution saying that X amount of funds must be used in subsequent years for a specific purpose. The assigned fund balance is similar to the committed, however, that's a designation made by the district administration. For example, we have a assigned fund balance of about $3.8 million for severance costs and other post-employment benefits. That's one that the administration proposes on a year-to-year basis. And finally, the most unrestricted portion of the fund balance is the unassigned. That can be used for any lawful purpose determined by the school board or administration.
Thank you.
So that brings us to Section 8, Assigning of Fund Balance. The way this read previously, it really fit the definition of a committed fund balance. So I propose striking that language and replacing it with language that allows the administration to propose assignments. However, those assignments would need to be approved by the school board via the annual financial audit. Any questions on 702? Policy 703, Accounting. No updates here, with the exception of some minor language and grammar changes. Policy 704, Annual Audit. Again, no real changes or updates to this policy, with the exception of language that links the audit policy to the fund balance policy language changes that I just referenced as part of Policy 702, specifically the assignment of fund balances by the administration.
My apologies. I had a comment back on 703. I got lost in the 700s, which one that I wanted to ask about. On the appendix, the inappropriate expenditures. Number one, this is really nitpicky, but can we change secretary to administrative assistant? Because I don't believe that's their title anymore.
So you're talking, referencing what in the language says secretary's day?
Yes.
Yeah.
Change it to administrative assistant's day?
Yeah, thank you.
Just to be, and then, sorry. And then in the same policy, I just had it in front of me, but then I flipped. There was one place where I, I'll find it afterwards, but there is one place in this policy where it used his and her verbiage that needs to be changed to their. So if 703 could just be reviewed again to make sure that it's gender-neutral pronouns?
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for pointing those out. Policy 705, the Development and Maintenance of a Fixed Asset Inventory System. The only change or proposed change here is a definition item defining what a fixed asset actually is. That criteria is actually published in our financial audit on a year-to-year basis. So I thought I would point that out, as well as define what we think an asset is. So no real changes to the policy besides that. Policy 706, again, no changes of substance here, except for an addition to the exhibit which describes allowable investments. The vast majority of the school district's funds are held in money market funds at either Minnesota Trust or the Minnesota School District Liquid Asset Fund. I thought it would be important to specifically note those as part of our allowable investments. Moving on to Policy 707, again, no real changes of substance here, only minor language updates that provide a little bit more clarity. And I believe that brings us to the end of our policy review for non-instructural operations.
Thank you, Mert. Much appreciated. Any other questions from the board that you'd like the committee to review before we bring it back? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Policy Committee. That concludes our discussion items. We're now going to move on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the K-5 science curriculum?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Julie and Regina. We're now going to welcome up Mark Carlson to discuss the new science curriculum.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, and board members. Thank you for having me back again to talk about K-5 science. Just here today to seek your approval for the purchase of Mystery Science as our core curricular materials for our K-5 students beginning in the fall of the 23-24 school year. Just a reminder, some of the key components that we really liked about the program was it aligns very well with the new three-dimensional standards. It's a very flexible tool that teachers can use. It's very easy for teachers to use. And we also feel it's really a good backbone for future STEAM work in the district. So if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but we're just here today to seek your approval for that purchase.
Questions, board members?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you so much for bringing this forward tonight for action. We have looked at this a lot over the line, had a lot of discussion, and I'm just thrilled that it's going to be hitting classrooms in the fall. So thank you, you and your team, for all your work.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, just to make sure if a community member hasn't followed along, that they understand. Could you explain the basics of the 3D curriculum that you just mentioned?
Sure. 3D represents the way the standards are kind of aligned and the way they're kind of set up. So if we look at standards in the past, they've been much more very fact-oriented, whereas now it's really about students being more scientifically driven. So they're looking for, as they look at their science, it's going to include a cross-cutting concept. It's going to include science and engineering practices, both of those also along with the scientific concept that they're learning. So those three things are going to be woven together kind of throughout all of the lessons that students will be doing throughout the year.
And then could you just explain where are we in the phase of rolling this out? And when are we anticipating it being completely rolled out to all of K through 5?
Yeah, so we would have it completely rolled out to K-5, starting at the fall of this 23-24 school year.
Great. Thank you very much for the information.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Great. We will now vote to approve the K-5 science curriculum. All those in favor of approving the curriculum say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The new K-5 science curriculum is approved. Thank you very much for all your work. Do I have a motion to approve Policies 301, 302, and 613?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we will go back to our Policy Committee.
Yes, we had an opportunity to discuss these on February 13th. There are no changes since we last discussed these policies.
Oh, sorry about that. Do any board members have questions before we vote on these three policies? We will now vote to approve Policies 301, 302, and 613. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Policies 301, 302, and 613 are approved. We're going to now move on to board leadership and committee updates. Do we have any committee updates from any committee chairs? I just had one quick thing that I wanted to say before moving to Superintendent Stanley for her superintendent update. And I don't know if anyone noticed, but over the weekend, there was a hockey tournament. And a lot of people in our community were engaged in that tournament. And I wanted to just acknowledge and tell our students, not just our hockey students, but we had our girls' hockey team coming third in the state. We had a wrestler coming fourth in the state. We had our dance program do the best that they've ever done in the state tournament before. So many wonderful things happening with our students. I am a very, very competitive person. No one in my family likes to play games with me or watch sports with me. But I want to make sure that our athletes and other student leaders are so proud, even though they didn't come in first. Coming in second in our state, third in our state, fourth in our state is such an amazing accomplishment, something most people never, ever, ever achieve. And I want to make sure our student athletes, our other student leaders that participate in academic events, band, theater, whatever you do, you know how proud our district and our community is of you. And I just wanted to pass that a message on and know that no matter where you are on the scorecard at the end, your hard work and dedication to your craft makes you a true winner. So I just wanted to say that.
I have one comment, if I may, along the same lines. I'd like to just acknowledge, and the one-
All those in favor say aye.[1250.94-1251.94][S05] Aye.[1252.03-1253.16][S03] Anyone opposed?[1253.16-1258.37][S03] Policies 301, 302, and 613 are approved.[1258.37-1262.44][S03] We're going to now move on to board leadership and committee updates.[1262.44-1265.03][S03] Do we have any committee updates from any committee chairs?[1267.66-1273.87][S11] I just had one quick thing that I wanted to say before moving to Superintendent Stanley[1273.87-1276.22][S11] for her superintendent update.[1276.22-1282.28][S11] And I don't know if anyone noticed, but over the weekend, there was a hockey tournament.[1282.28-1287.37][S11] And a lot of people in our community were engaged in that tournament.[1287.37-1294.66][S11] And I wanted to just acknowledge and tell our students, not just our hockey students,[1294.66-1298.48][S11] but we had our girls' hockey team coming third in the state.[1298.48-1300.66][S11] We had a wrestler coming fourth in the state.[1300.66-1306.98][S11] We had our dance program do the best that they've ever done in the state tournament before.[1306.98-1310.28][S11] So many wonderful things happening with our students.[1310.28-1312.91][S11] I am a very, very competitive person.[1312.91-1317.87][S11] No one in my family likes to play games with me or watch sports with me.[1317.87-1322.37][S11] But I want to make sure that our athletes and other student leaders are so proud,[1322.37-1324.22][S11] even though they didn't come in first.[1324.22-1328.53][S11] Coming in second in our state, third in our state, fourth in our state[1328.53-1334.56][S11] is such an amazing accomplishment, something most people never, ever, ever achieve.[1334.56-1340.56][S11] And I want to make sure our student athletes, our other student leaders that participate[1340.56-1345.33][S11] in academic events, band, theater, whatever you do,[1345.33-1349.33][S11] you know how proud our district and our community is of you.[1349.33-1356.37][S11] And I just wanted to pass that message on and know that no matter where you are on the scorecard[1356.37-1360.83][S11] at the end, your hard work and dedication to your craft makes you a true winner.[1360.83-1362.28][S11] So I just wanted to say that.[1363.06-1364.41][S12] Chair.[1364.41-1367.41][S12] I have one comment, if I may, to, along the same lines.[1367.41-1372.94][S12] I'd like to just acknowledge and the wonderful job that Director Neville has done[1372.94-1377.48][S12] as far as Valley View Middle School's theater production of Beauty and the Beast.[1377.48-1379.66][S12] I had the privilege of attending that with my family.[1379.66-1383.22][S12] My daughter, who's a sixth grader there, this past weekend.[1383.22-1388.56][S12] That was an absolutely amazing performance of our middle school students at Valley View.[1388.56-1393.00][S12] And listening to the commentary from other families and other people who attended,[1393.00-1398.83][S12] it was such beautifully produced and directed and not solely for Director Neville's purposes.[1398.83-1401.06][S12] I know she's just one component of that.[1401.06-1404.03][S12] But it just goes to show to the excellence that you just described[1404.03-1407.56][S12] about everything that our students do and our programs that we do.[1407.56-1410.06][S12] We get to see them in all sorts of different facets.[1410.06-1413.06][S12] And it's something that I was quite proud of first as a parent,[1413.06-1416.56][S12] but then secondarily as a board member of our wonderful district.[1416.56-1418.72][S12] So congratulations on such a wonderful outcome.[1420.16-1421.16][S08] Thank you.[1421.16-1426.28][S08] As I think we all know, we have phenomenal arts programs as well in addition to our athletics.[1426.28-1429.66][S08] So a lot to be proud of in Edina all around.[1429.66-1430.66][S08] Thank you.[1431.06-1432.06][S03] Thank you.[1432.06-1433.33][S03] Thank you very much.[1433.33-1434.33][S03] Dr. Stanley?[1435.53-1439.56][S13] Well, I want to echo exactly what you just said.[1439.56-1446.16][S13] Over the past month, I have had the opportunity to attend incredible performances,[1446.16-1447.94][S13] theater performances.[1447.94-1454.83][S13] I've had a chance to spend time with our students, watching them in their athletic endeavors.[1454.83-1461.00][S13] I just want to congratulate all of the many Hornets on all of your successes[1461.00-1464.66][S13] throughout winter sports, throughout winter activities.[1464.66-1470.72][S13] It brings our community together in a way that is different than anything else that we are doing.[1470.72-1473.37][S13] And I just truly appreciate that.[1473.37-1475.48][S13] It is truly living out our mission.[1475.48-1482.33][S13] Our mission says that through academics and activities and opportunities,[1482.33-1487.87][S13] we are helping to build varying skill sets, including creativity, our theater production,[1487.87-1498.72][S13] including, including developing critical thinking skills, including encouraging collaboration.[1498.72-1501.48][S13] All of those pieces are so important.[1501.48-1503.00][S13] And I just want to thank all of our students.[1503.00-1505.91][S13] Because of you, you're bringing us together across the community.[1505.91-1508.16][S13] So thank you for that.[1508.16-1515.83][S13] The other thing I will say, one of the best things is to meet our alum who are so proud of you.[1515.83-1520.06][S13] I want all of our students to know how much our alum are proud of you.[1520.06-1521.37][S13] Grandmas and grandpas.[1521.37-1525.98][S13] I met an alum who graduated in 1949 the other day.[1525.98-1531.03][S13] And he was just so proud to be there and to be honoring our students.[1531.03-1533.03][S13] So thank you for that.[1533.03-1539.28][S13] Another thing that I want to note is last time I mentioned that we had a couple of teachers[1539.28-1543.83][S13] who had been recommended for Minnesota Teacher of the Year.[1543.83-1549.48][S13] I'm really proud to share that Giovanna Margoli has moved on as a semifinalist.[1549.48-1554.00][S13] She is a fourth grade teacher at Cornelia for Minnesota Teacher of the Year.[1554.00-1556.28][S13] So congratulations to Giovanna.[1556.28-1557.83][S13] Really excited for her for that.[1562.62-1566.28][S13] I also want to congratulate David Higley.[1566.28-1572.06][S13] He is one of our Edina Virtual Pathways teachers.[1572.06-1579.25][S13] And he was selected as the February National Virtual Teacher of the Month[1579.25-1581.62][S13] by the Virtual Teacher Association.[1581.62-1583.33][S13] So congratulations to David.[1587.00-1599.00][S13] And then Normandale Elementary was identified as the Best of Edina finalist[1599.00-1601.00][S13] in the annual survey.[1601.00-1605.41][S13] So finalists for the annual Best of Edina were just announced by Edina Magazine[1605.41-1608.12][S13] and Normandale Elementary French Immersion School[1608.12-1614.56][S13] is among those on the list of best language immersion programs or schools.[1614.56-1618.28][S13] Readers are invited in January to, well, they were invited in January[1618.28-1621.56][S13] to vote for the best Edina has to offer.[1621.56-1626.53][S13] And winners, the official winners will be announced in the July issue.[1626.53-1628.41][S13] So congratulations to Normandale.[1629.62-1630.62][S13] Clap, clap, clap.[1634.16-1640.56][S13] And then finally, just received an incredible note from a parent.[1640.56-1644.53][S13] And she writes, hello Ms. Pryor and Dr. Stanley.[1644.53-1648.16][S13] I'm sure you are busy with all the weather-related decisions,[1648.16-1652.83][S13] but I wanted to give a quick shout out to a few people at Valley View Middle School.[1652.83-1658.44][S13] There have been a variety of personal highs and lows this year for my daughter at Valley View Middle School,[1658.44-1661.91][S13] with the most recent that she has had COVID.[1661.91-1666.56][S13] I just wanted to recognize the following staff for going above and beyond.[1666.56-1671.91][S13] Jennifer Smith and Ann Lindquist in the Valley View Health Office.[1671.91-1676.00][S13] These are two superstars working with my daughter on various health needs[1676.00-1682.22][S13] that have come up throughout the year, but especially with the recent COVID diagnosis.[1682.22-1689.44][S13] They helped us process decisions related to COVID and went way, way, way above and beyond[1689.44-1692.98][S13] to make sure we had tests as requested.[1692.98-1699.48][S13] I cannot put into words the gratitude I have for how much these two have patiently helped[1699.48-1703.75][S13] our patient and our family.[1703.75-1709.28][S13] Kim Griffiths, Valley View Math Teacher, she's my daughter's math teacher.[1709.28-1715.75][S13] She has also gone above and beyond in trying to help my daughter succeed this year in an advanced course.[1715.75-1722.33][S13] She not only works with her on content, but has also met with her multiple times[1722.33-1727.44][S13] outside of her regularly scheduled class to work on organizational skills.[1727.44-1732.94][S13] I'm a math teacher myself, and Ms. Griffiths is an inspiration for what it looks like[1732.94-1738.37][S13] to go above and beyond to help a student reach success, not only with the content,[1738.37-1741.53][S13] but life skills too.[1741.53-1748.28][S13] The snow, this snowy day seemed like a great day to share some bright spots in Edina Public Schools.[1748.28-1749.28][S13] Thank you.[1754.22-1757.48][S13] So lots of great things happening in Edina Public Schools.[1757.48-1759.37][S13] And really pleased that I could share those.[1760.83-1762.53][S03] Thank you very much, Dr. Stanley.[1762.53-1766.33][S03] So as Dr. Stanley said before, we actually have a closed session right now.[1766.33-1769.56][S03] And so I'm going to recess this part of the meeting.[1769.56-1772.06][S03] But know that we are not coming back.[1772.06-1774.56][S03] So this will end this portion of the meeting.[1774.56-1778.06][S03] And I will be adjourning our meeting from our closed session.[1778.06-1782.75][S03] That will technically be opening, but it won't be for a while.[1782.75-1783.91][S03] And it will be in a different room.[1783.91-1786.83][S03] So there won't be no more video feed from now on.[1786.83-1789.83][S03] So we will be in a recess now for five minutes.[1789.83-1790.83][S03] Thank you, everyone.[1790.83-1791.83]